The things we can do. So Trish has got the habit of us meeting, but she starts the meeting.
Got you. So we just need to all remember we've got to unmute.
Got to wash for that.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
I'm better seen than heard.
Keep an eye on us.
Right.
So everything's in order for Creek Enterprise to dig this hole?
Yes.
All right. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
That is all I have. Uh, other than that, we are extremely busy home and rock right now and trying to build farm entrances. So.
We have a lot of driveways to do.
I think right now we're sitting on six or eight checks. Most of them come in, uh, the spring with the exception of like maybe two. I think your sons is one of them. I'm not sure.
You got her done.
Yeah, I'd say I I think that was, I told him it was high priority. Cause the building was up.
Yeah.
But yeah, beyond that, uh, waiting when it's fit. Trying to get dust controls ready, cause I think dust controls, the plan is to come in next week. Uh, four of them. We got, uh, ProColop, Weslins, uh, Dinos and, um, Kiss, Snowmough.
Yeah, he did a lot of the, uh, Sheldon Park.
Yep. Yeah.
They're doing them now.
Uh, I believe they'll start next week. So we're working on getting the dust control spots ready for.
You have when the tile broken the ditches, you bet on the fields.
Do we what?
You have as many tile broke in the ditch as we do on the fields.
Oh, yes.
Never ending chasing them down.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the deal is this year. It seems, I don't know if people are just more aware of it, you know, calling us or.
For you guys?
Yeah.
I would say ours is regular this time of year, just because the grass is laid down, you know, right after winter. The ability to see.
Sometimes wonder if farmers aren't under so much pressure to get stuff done. They're a little more observant of other things.
The ones I look at is got holes big to this table. So they got, they were noticed it.
Yeah.
Or been in it.
Yeah.
But I just wonder if the county is having the same issues, cause your tiles a lot shallower because of the ditch.
Yeah.
The field tile.
Yeah.
But it's just amazing.
Yeah, I mean, we can pull up the, the work order tool after the, the meeting is over. If there's a laptop linked up to this and, and show you guys in where we're sitting at around four hundred open work orders right now.
Four hundred? Wow.
Roughly.
Wow. So. Job security.
I mean, that's, that's everything from, uh, trees reported that are grown in the right way that need to be cut. Tile that needs to be repaired, driveways that need to be built, uh, all of our dust control spots are, uh, marked as work orders. And then once we rock them, we mark them as complete. Um.
Sign repair.
Sign repair. Yeah. You name it. I mean, we've got it on duty, so. It's a, a, a good tracking tool that helps us with accountability. When someone calls in and marked down who it was that called in the day they called in. So digital log, so.
That's quite a ring.
Yeah, Safari.
I was like, okay, we just need your duck quack.
I text Kathy to see if she can come down.
Oh, okay.
And she's gonna come down.
Okay.
We, we are going to back to four tens, right?
We are looking at going back to four tens, um. Our office might actually switch to a, uh, uh, a hybrid four nines and a half day Friday. Like similar other counties are, are doing, uh, obviously if we're in construction. Will be.
You're gonna be there.
I'll, I'll be working five twelves or whatever it takes when we're, when our contractor actually shows up. But, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, planned, planned for them. Rognis said, uh, first of June, so we're about two weeks away from them. And they've got two structures. They've got the one over by Bob Nellis and they've got one over by Thor. So.
I'm not doing any paving this year, are I?
There is no paving this year. Uh, there will be a local letting. Right after the first of July for paved, uh, curves at the bottom of Alberdeen, Rutland.
Okay.
And, uh.
Safety issues.
But the funding's not available until July one, so we're not allowed to let that project until then. But otherwise major paving now.
No.
That'll be next, next year will be tied with Hogans County on P nineteen.
Here we get a lot of rock and not a humble going south.
There is, um, uh, Severs Griffith is. I mean, they got, uh, two belts peeing the pile right now and the pile's not getting any bigger.
So. It's rock down on Des Moines, started expensive.
Uh, I forget what they told me. Close to nineteen dollars a ton down by Des Moines.
Yeah.
So. They're able to, so they're coming up here buying it either from Severs at nine and a quarter or, uh, Martin Marietta at ten eighty. So.
Being around P nineteen clear the McNeice point?
No.
No, okay.
Brag, uh, from Bradgate to C forty-nine.
Okay.
So. Everything north of Bradgate on P nineteen was paved in two thousand and five.
That's why I was asking.
So. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's alligating pretty bad north of Bradgate. We need to probably look at chip seal for maintenance.
Martin Marietta's passing the road right there to turn it up.
There's a sag through that, yep. Yeah, we're doing a, uh, alternate bid is what our anticipation is, so.
Okay.
We're gonna do a cold in place with asphalt overlay versus a PC overlay, so.
Return to.
Everybody has copies I received, um, so the current cell phone that is used for mental health advocate is through, um, the contract is through Rolling Hills Mental Health Region. And they have started the process to, um, terminate their agreements with Verizon since their region will be ending their services on June thirtieth. So there are two, the mental health advocate in Woodbury County as well as myself. Um, they are looking to try to transfer that cell phone number to the respective counties. So that we don't have to change our cell phone number, um, and do a new plan. And I do think that would be, I mean, personally, I would appreciate the ability to do that just, um, for all the individuals that have my current number, you know, there will be a lot of transitions occurring come July one. And so to keep that consistency, I think would be very, very helpful for anyone, um, but particularly myself. Um, so this was the agreement that was sent and I felt that it needed to come to the board. Um, just because this is the transfer request to start the process, but it has to be, um, an individual that's authorized to bind. To bind the party that the number is changing to. And I, I am not an authorized party. Or I can't authorize on behalf of Humboldt County. So that is why I'm bringing it to the board. Um, just for discussion and, and the hope that the board will agree to continue that and move forward. So, um, if the board agrees to do that, the options would be to have, um, you know, either Humboldt County to do it or to authorize, um, me to complete the form. I know that there are a few online steps then that will need to be completed with Verizon. I did ask on a couple occasions and finally got an answer. I'm like, what's the cost? Cause I can't ask to transfer something if we don't know the cost. And, um, I think you have a copy of that email or at least I brought it down. Um, what they had said is their current governmental public sector rate, um, for unlimited is thirty-six ninety-nine a month. Which I think is really reasonable.
Yeah, it is.
Um, for that, so, um, so yeah, I'm just coming to the board with that for any discussion or authorization. However, the board would like to proceed with it if they choose to do so and then complete the next step. So we can have that all taken care of prior to June thirtieth.
I definitely agree. There's gonna be enough changes happening July one. We need to have some normalcy for your clients and, and for people that need to contact you. So that they know where to go. Um. Will the ASOs reimburse? I know they'll reimburse the, um, the, you know, your wages and all that.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's, it's a necessary expense. So I think that that needs to be at least attempted in the submission.
So it'll be just like a quarterly thing that we do, like we do for your wages and benefits and franchise.
I, I'm guessing probably monthly.
Monthly?
Yeah. I mean, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but they, the ASO has not provided information, um, as of yet.
How they're gonna pay, okay.
Right, how they are gonna pay or.
Quarterly, I think.
Yeah, they, they do. Um, however, I submit my information on a monthly basis through the regions. And then I think they just do the reimbursement between, um, Central Iowa Community Services and Rolling Hills on a quarterly basis. Is what they do. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
So if we do the, do this transfer, then they'll decide or you'll find out if it's monthly or quarterly or how it's gonna be debated.
Um, I'm, no, I am certain that Verizon will want a monthly payment, just like anybody else, but yeah, Verizon will, but.
Reimbursement, you know, how we.
Yeah. Yeah.
How we get reimbursed back from the ASO.
Yeah.
Cause the re- right now, regions have always done just quarterly. So I don't know if the ASOs will do it quarterly or they'll do, I.
I.
My guess is they're gonna follow the same suit, but that's just a guess. Cause nobody, it's not one of those things. They just don't wanna, you know, release anything.
I, I think, and, and again, I have no, no information necessarily out there to guide, you know, what they're going to do or expect. But I, I would guess monthly because I think they will want to treat the services the same and, um, entities will need their cash flow. So.
Well, I know in the, at the, the last meeting we had for in March, they said that, um, to prepare to have for the, uh, employer record to have a quarter to be able to cover the first quarter. That's what they said down at the meeting. So that's what I'm guessing they're gonna pay quarterly. That's the reason why I'm going on that.
Yeah.
Cause they said to make sure that we had the, the flow for the first quarter.
Yeah. And they're, they're really hoping, um, you know, to keep things as stable as possible. And I think they're really gonna look to keep things as consistent as they can through December thirty-first as they get on board and, and do things. I mean, they're, they're highly motivated. They don't want to see, they want everything to be successful as well. So, yeah.
No, I agree.
So they're still redistricting and stuff. They're still.
No, the districts are all set and they've got, from what I understand, they have their, um, overall CEO of the ASO. And then they've got the regional people and I think they're just hiring now. They, aren't they?
They're, they've got, um, the position that, um, and I, and I apologize, I don't remember the title. But the, the person who has immediate oversight of all districts across the state, so the seven districts is in place.
Um, I just called the CEO. I don't know if that's.
Yep, yep, um, but they are hiring a manager for each of the seven districts. That, those are advertised now as well as district navigator positions. And they are just starting, I think, with a few in each district and hope to build to the capacity that they want by December thirty-first. So.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but weren't they going to staff everybody out of their own pocket, our own people at one time?
Well, they did not, they didn't give it, okay, so this is the, the brilliance of our legislature. I'm just gonna put it right out there. They did not fund any transition money. So how can you do something in a transition period and have continuity when you didn't budget for it? And they didn't, so they don't have the allocation. They did finally do something so that we could, some of the major.
Yeah, I think that they did open up some money.
Yeah, they finally did, but not enough to fund the whole thing completely yet, which is.
But they are gonna staff their own. They're gonna keep some of the people already out here. That's why I'm asking.
They're not. The.
Okay.
I mean.
You gotta remember, mental health advocates. No, no, I know, no, I know, I know. But what I'm trying to tell you is Kathy's position is totally different from anything else with the mental health region. I just wanna make, cause I know you guys are new, so I just wanna make sure you understand that, cause that's where the big.
Well, you're gonna help me out too, because it's.
Okay, so I'll look at everybody. I'll look at the two newbies. Kathy's thing is the state legislature. So she is in code itself, a mental health advocate. Every county has to have a mental health advocate. Now, the regions or it used to be, oh God, this is a long time ago, CPA, CP.
CPC.
CPC, I don't even get all the acronyms. You're full of acronyms. They used to do it. That was like Don Anderson. I don't know if any of you guys remember Don Anderson, but Don and he had a crew of, I don't know, maybe. They took, why don't, maybe you can probably explain it better than I can.
Well, I mean, it's just been, it's just been over the course of a number of years, many transitions of how they handle mental health. And I mean, years ago, um, there used to be seven or eight staff in our office because we did multiple programs. We did targeted case management through our office. We had supported employment through our office as well as some community living services and our drop-in center. We used to have a drop-in center for folks with, um, mental health and disabilities. But, you know, as time moved forward, um, the thought was that folks funding the services shouldn't be providing the services. So the county really moved out of that arena, um, in terms of a lot of those things. And, and they pushed that out to the service providers like Westwork Services, um, One Vision. Um, and the, and Life Works Community Services. So then Medicaid, um, the state brought in what they call managed care companies, which then took on the targeted case management, which our office did. So then that went, got pushed out to, um, private organizations. So, um, now the mental health regions, you know, really kind of the last major tie to county funding dollars. And really it, it has been state dollars all for several years.
Three years.
The la- yeah, the last three years it has been state dollars. So, um, this is just kind of their, their last move to, to really, um, you know, redo, relook at the, the mental health system in the state. So that's, that's where we're at now.
Right.
But the mental health advocate is, yes, it's, it's defined in Iowa Code two-two-nine, um, and it deals with the civil committal process. So.
Yeah.
And, and it is county employees who do that. So.
So it's, it's mostly committals and, uh, court cases and things like that, that you, that you deal with. All the other mental health stuff was by the region and now will be with the ASOs and the Mel are gonna have six people and they're gonna find people to do that.
Yeah.
That's what I understand. Are she gonna be replaced? That's what I was.
No, no, no.
That's why I was asking that question.
Could've answered that in two seconds. Okay, well, all that being said, I'm gonna make the, the, um, motion that actually we give Kathy the authority to take care of whatever you need to do to get this transferred over. Because if it's internet, you don't, we don't, cause Rick would be the chair. So you don't really wanna deal with that, do you? Okay, that's why I'm just, I'm looking at you and asking. I'm looking out for you, Rick.
And if, if anything transpires in the course of this that makes it look differently than what I've relayed to you today, I will, I will notify the board of that.
He gives you flow with this transfer?
No. I'm fine with my current phone. It works, it works perfectly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Kathy.
All in favor? Any opposed? The non-motions carried. Got that taken care of. All right, we're close to our nine o'clock. We're looking for most to go into drainage.
I don't think they're on it.
Wait, yeah, but let's go ahead. We got.
I'll make that, I got that. I mean, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second, first and second, all in favor?
Hi.
I mean, we are.
Oh, I see, which, no, she's still gonna pay, but she does work mostly with the court cases and committals and things like that. The mental health stuff, it's still honestly up in the air, which is, we are what? Six weeks from July one?
Yeah, we're not that far away and they still don't know what they're doing for sure.
I mean, they, again, like I keep saying, they have this wonderful goal. I mean, if we hit their goal that, it'll be ideal, it'll be perfect, but they don't have a plan on how to get to that goal. And that's the scary part right now.
How did that happen? Did you call throughout here?
In Rutland?
Yeah. They get that taken care of.
It was pretty much painful.
Cover it up. Any other things we gotta talk about drainage before we talk to Sue?
I mentioned over here at Cornet, uh, I'm gonna ride, drive out there after the meeting to see what Doug has got going on. With that one less of the divers.
Okay. Uh, I had some spare time this week, so I sat and read Drainage Code for quite a while. Um. So mainly the topic was, I was looking for was private drains into our ditch rooms. And way the code reads, it say, it says you may repair private outlets and charge it back to the, to the landowners. But it doesn't say, it says assess it to the landowners. Well, it says you may, doesn't say you have to. But the problem you get into, like I was saying, uh, this one out here, they got about five acres of CRP that two private lines come through and drain the neighbors, the rest of the section. So the landowner that has five acres of CRP there, it's gonna get stabbed with the outlet cost. You know, they ain't right. And that, um, and then they don't fix them because they have no incentive to fix them. And if we go in and fix it, fix it ourselves, then do we, how do we get that money out of it? You know, so it says you can assess them, but it doesn't say that you can put it on their taxes. It doesn't say, how you assess it.
Well, but in the instance of a joint district, if whatever the county is, it's joint, if they don't do that, then you're kind of gonna pitfall there too.
Yeah. Well, we kinda ran into that just the other day. Brian, Brian Hunt called and that's what happened to me with Ben. And, uh, he has a neighbor that he let come down, uh, kind of the main. Well, I went and looked at it. It's, it's like ten, twenty feet from the main. There's a just water bubbling up out of the dirt. You can't tell exactly where it is, but he's nice enough to call him. So it wasn't the main.
Yeah.
It was a private tile coming into it. He said, how do I get paid for this getting fixed when I'm getting absolutely no benefit out of it? We had that discussion on the phone. So it's, it dovetails exactly what you just said. And we, the only recommendation we had was to call your neighbor and see if you want it fixed or we just.
Yeah.
How's all that work?
Yeah.
So he allowed the guy to go through his land, but now the one that his, not his, but the.
The guy that drained into it is, is his, his tile that hooked into the main has a leak in it.
Gotcha.
And now this guy that owns the property that was nice enough letting it come through. Is gonna have to pay, is gonna have to pay for that repair, cause otherwise water is just gonna churn out there across the ground.
Right.
And so it's gonna hurt him in the long run.
And the dirt goes into the tile and then it runs into the drainage dish and we hire Peterson to dip it out. You know, it's, that's why I say we need to come up with a solution.
Yeah.
To, that's what I thought if, especially on the pipes, we have control of that. And then, then we can repair them and the whole district benefits from that.
Should it be the whole district though, or just the people that are hooked into the private tile that have to pay for the repair?
But how can you, how do you know where that private tile goes?
That's.
See that's.
And how do you, how do you assess?
Just like this guy here.
Yeah.
You know, like in the city here, if you, if you don't mow your lawn, they come in and mow it and they put it on your property tax. And I don't know if we have that authority to do that.
It's a great question because we've run into it on the zoning side. Like how do I go back and assess these people that don't get a building permit that should have?
Right.
Be nice if you had the recourse where it's like, all right, well, it's just gonna go on your tax.
Yeah, it's going your property tax.
Do we have to do a resolution or something like that to do that? I mean.
So do they have to let us know that they hook onto our county tile?
No.
Then problem is, is you don't have any idea.
Right.
How many people are hooked onto our tile and draining into our tile, which goes to their ditch, which, at what point does the guy down that has the outlet?
It says, it says they have the right to book onto it. Doesn't say they have to record it.
No.
They didn't realize that. I thought they, if they hooked onto our county one, I thought they had to let us know. No.
No.
You can do it like it's the day of the night and, but you can do it in broad daylight and not have to worry about.
Oh my God.
It is.
I didn't realize that.
You know, like, well, that's why we started the policy of paying for the pipe, because people were just looking, just running the plastic tile into the ditch. Or they put a piece of PVC on it and, you know, ten foot chunk of PVC and then fall off and.
Oh my God.
That's why we started a policy of paying for the pipe.
Thanks.
Well, then overload's existing, cause back in the sixty, they put in an eight, thought that was gonna be big enough for anything. And then now we gotta take them on the side as a relief, because that eight, I think, isn't gonna handle anything straight at it.
Yeah.
Well, I was gonna call her quick and see what.
So it's, it's something I think we need to work through and.
Yeah. Now, did you say you did contact the drainage lawyer to see what he?
No, I did not. I just said.
Okay.
Haven't you?
That's okay, yeah. Maybe that might be.
And I don't wanna put it on you, but do you think that would be a question we should throw at Doug and ask him?
I think so.
Um, what is our ability to put this charge on?
I mean, the thing is, if we're gonna go in and fix it on private mains and assess it back to the landowner. We gotta have a, a way of doing that.
Right. Yes.
And then, like I say again, is it just a response to the way it reads is the land that lays touching the ditch is the one that gets assessed. You know, where it hooks on. Well, like you say, it's out here. One thing I looked at, boy, they're not gonna like that.
Yeah. I wouldn't.
No, I wouldn't either, cause you're draining the neighbor's field and it comes a hundred yards to yours and you're getting billed. So, so they're, they're, they're not pushing to get it fixed, I'm sure.
Well, the worst part of it is the tile coming in from the north was up in Kusuth County.
Yeah, and see.
So now you've got him coming from Kusuth into Humboldt.
That's why I say if the drainage districts pay for it, it just cleans it up and makes it so much easier to get this stuff done. And then the whole drainage district benefits. Yeah. I don't know. It, um, it needs to be changed. Um, one other tidbit of information, uh, John Tolbert. Or IDDA. He had an accident over the weekend, so he's gonna be laid up for a while. He was doing some home repair and fell off his deck into his window well. Hit his head with cement and rusted some cracks and vertebrae and things like that.
Not good.
He said that he was lucky he had his eyewatch on because no one was home and he was down in the window well and couldn't get out.
You called for Larry?
Called him his eyewatch for nine one one.
I fell off my bike one time and my watch asked if I fell and if I was okay.
Really?
So I don't, it'll do that. I mean, it's really good.
You hear a lot of times on the scanner.
Yeah.
Where they've gotten, um, notification from somebody's.
Ball note, yeah.
Eyewatch.
Yep. I couldn't, I could, I was stunned and I couldn't hit that fast enough.
Don't send anybody.
That's where July.
Hello?
I've done that too.
I would just like to see if, if that's the easiest way to clean it up, if we're gonna be the ones that, you know, the first one you do. Somebody raises a stink.
So.
Cause it doesn't benefit us at all.
I would argue it does benefit the second ever growth either, but.
But.
Yeah.
The one that he just mentioned about where it's attached to our line and that farmer's the one that is getting the worst out of it. Cause it's coming up out of the ground. He's the one that really is.
Yeah, yeah, he has to pay for it.
What is that saying? No good deed goes undone or, uh? Unpunished, that's it. I knew it was something.
So how would it, how would it not benefit such a good loads?
I mean.
I don't think, I don't think it really affects you.
Usually dumps into a. Usually dumps into a drainage district main out in a field which dumps into. The dredge ditch out in.
Yeah, so it really doesn't affect you at all.
It doesn't.
No.
I mean, I think the way it was originally written with the adjacent landlord was. Where it dumps out, if that fails, it's gonna physically wash away. That person's property and your instance where the person has only five acres, if it blows out, that property owner is gonna lose land. So it's in his best interest to fix the outlet or lose land due to scouring.
Yeah. Well, we'll have that conversation.
So. Marge said that she was gonna make a couple of phone calls to the supervisors. So if they don't come on within the next couple of minutes, that. They probably need to reschedule. They evidently forgot.
Oh, boy, trial's gonna get.
Yep, my telling that little guy.
Alright. Well, in short. That's a fun of having joint meetings for a small project.
I know. That's why we need this MOU.
Frustrating.
I know it is.
Well, let's talk about something else about drainage ditches, asparagus, anybody find?
I need some.
I got in trouble over the weekend. I went out hunting asparagus and.
You're one of those guys.
My wife's like, she calls, what are you doing? Why is there traffic in the back? Like, I'm down in the ditch. With your knee?
Yeah.
Yeah, I took my time going down there, but I gotta.
No, I left it on the bank.
Thank goodness, uh, nice friendly farmer said, hey, I've been hunting, I've had a lot. He helped me.
That was nice.
It's delicious. It's better than ice.
I, I just can't, we got a patch in the yard. It grows so fast. I mean, it'll be two inches. And two days later is that tall. I just can't get over how fast that stuff grows.
My grandma had a huge patch. Should call my uncle and say, hey, I'll come visit if I'm.
Come with a spade and dig some of that, take it home.
Can we, are we able to, uh, do our committee reports or do we have to go out of this and then go back in? I knew you'd be the rules type person.
Might not have to go back in if they don't.
Well, I know. That's what I'm saying. If we went out, then we'll just go back in if they come back on.
Alright, we do that. I'll make that motion to leave drainage.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Alright, Roddy Green's back in regular session and we'll do the committee reports.
Right, um, Monday after the meeting, uh, Doug Marshall told. So wanted someone to come out to Cornith Section Nine. He had a, uh. Pipe dug up, out there that had collapsed, the joint or the box. I guess it's an old style box, the tile and several tiles come together there had collapsed. So I went out there. I called Rick to see if he was still around just for another set of eyes and he came out. So we went and looked at it and. Um, what are there? Four pipe coming together there that runs.
Yeah.
Parallel with another big tile. So.
It's a, it's a crazy spot. There's so much going on right there. There's two fifteen, no, fifteen and twelve and thirty-six. Main all within about a hundred feet. It all dumping. No. No, the, the, the twelves and the fifteens and an eight jump, dump into a junction box. There's a thirty-six inch new main is by itself.
Okay.
Is that that brick one that got built that's?
Yeah, one of those old brick ones.
Picture of it.
Yeah. It's a mess and.
Have you done them?
No, I.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
I had a picture there to, uh, then on Tuesday, I came up here for the.
We've seen worse. I suppose Marshall gave it in.
Wednesday, I went to the hospital for the mental health, uh, meeting.
Mental health in the workplace.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which the hospital and, and Alyssa O'Connor put on. It was very interesting. Lots of. Ideas, I guess, of what they're trying and what they're open and, and working through the school and, uh. People in the, um, businesses, I guess. Trying to, you know, I guess the number one thing I took away is if you think. Someone's having issues, don't be afraid to, don't do it in. Visit with them.
Yeah.
Try to.
Help them through.
Help them.
Um, especially with the, with the workplaces, uh, it. It creates more problems later down the road if you don't take care of it. If there's a mental health issue or. Could just be anxiety, it could be depression. I mean, it could be, it doesn't have to mean that they're bipolar or anything like that. Everybody just has. Down days or, and sometimes they just continue on. And so you need to get a lot, like, like us, we need to make sure that our employees know that we have an EAP program. Employee Assistance Program. And that's something we need, really need to let our employees know because you get so many a year. Cause she's three, three. That's, that's usually the norm. Three. I don't know what ours is. Do you know what it is?
Not talking my head out.
I don't either.
And I think the scariest part is, is the amount of doctors or people that they put on at the hospital, um. And the amount of, they're full.
Yeah.
I mean, they're running.
Well, they're backed, backed up along.
And that's using kids and, um. Young kids, middle aged kids, high school kids to adults. I mean, it's, it's. Running full capacities.
What is this? Was it six or seven therapists? Six or seven, then they had the gal that would manage it. And then they're having a psychiatrist come in in August. And they, was it three or six months they're backed up?
Three, I think.
It used to be six. It used to be six months backed up, but now they hired, and they're still looking for another one. I think it's six and they're looking for another one. Wasn't that it?
Yeah.
Therapist?
They want seven.
Yeah, they want seven.
So they're working, hopefully.
Yeah.
Make some progress there. And then on Thursday I came up and we had two more interviews for the janitorial. Job. That's what I did.
Um, Tuesday I did the janitor interview. Wednesday, the, um, mental health in the workplace, I did, was that that? And then interviews on Thursday with the janitors. And then that's it.
On Monday, I went to the city council meeting to see how they're gonna handle the Jacob Miller situation. They were supposed to vote on it Monday, but they didn't. I mean, they're.
Do they table it or?
They're okay with it. I think.
Okay.
They're, they're okay with it. They're gonna go with it.
Good, good.
Here's the public safety meeting, talk about that situation. And then I had, uh, one interview on Tuesday also. And then Thursday, went out to Brian Spellmeyer's and looked at the main that was sunken down. And I had two interviews on Thursday also left.
Um, Tuesday I went to Vernon Section Two, we're quarter twenty-five dash zero two three, letter one. Twenty-four inch main for that Brian Hunt we discussed earlier. It turned out to be somebody else's. Oh, God, that was, went bad. Uh, Wednesday went to the Partnership for Economic Growth, went to the Humboldt County Foundation Room. What was it? Like you guys was discussing, it was pretty eye opening. I come back and went to the. Board of Review meeting in this very room. I went through that for, it was interesting. Um, the detail was that they go through on each contested assessment was amazing. Lot of, lot of computers going or telephones going. Um, uh, Tom Huntley from Vernon Section Twenty-Six, DD one nineteen, Branch One. And I looked, is, uh, another one of them, they holes in nowhere. And Thursday come in for interviews, maintenance job. What would Ben up to the, uh, P nineteen, Section Five, two, Section Five and Six, still a bit, uh, crossing that, coming. Soon. Um, and Friday I went with Paul around the courthouse and. Located all the PTX, all the furnaces, all the, everything that the new guy's gonna have to know or want to know where stuff's at. And I made a list and gave it to Shana this morning. So that was about it.
Who's doing the work or, or prepare yourself in that part of the world?
Uh, Laverne, what's his name?
Oh, Larson, Levi Larson.
Okay, yeah, I seen somebody up there doing some work. I think that's who it was. Okay. Alright, um, Monday I went with Bruce out there and looked at that junction box and I know. Bruce, he talked to, um, Tancre, uh, it used to be Tancre. Uh, about getting a pre-gas box that they had, that doesn't meet specs. And use that as a junction box rather than pre-ploring. And I talked to Mike Arndorf from ADS and see if they had any options and. They do have options, but they're terribly expensive. And he suggested using a, um, a pre-gas septic tank. I thought, oh, that's a good idea, other than the fact they're not structurally sound enough. They gotta be, they gotta be full of water.
Yeah.
At all times to, to, um, be, you know, the water inside actually helps the, helps support.
Okay.
So that guy said, I don't use that soon. Anyway.
Okay.
So it sounds like, uh, they're gonna use that pre-gas box from out here. So that's good. And Tuesday. We had a public safety meeting at eight and then I was here for the interviews in the afternoon. Thursday morning at Bank Iowa for Economic Development and then Thursday afternoon for interviews again. That was my week.
Can we take a minute and have Alyssa put her on the spot? That training you guys talked about out there Wednesday?
Well, the first day.
Yeah. Could, can you give a brief overview that would be? Of how that would go into, well, I'm just saying, because you'd get it all right where I'd be. What I remember of it, I just think that it's important that if businesses, um, can send somebody to. Understand it's a, what'd you, they say eight hour class?
The first day training?
Yeah, so mental health first aid, um, we offered it. It's been a while, um. And it is a fantastic class. Um, it is actually a certification. So you get continuing education. Um, it's super tense. Um, I think the goal would be for folks that take it to better recognize. When someone's experiencing a mental health crisis, um, and then what steps to take. So. Um, we offered it in partnership with Iris State. Just to try and get businesses to have the information to be available to recognize some of those things. Uh, we did get some feedback that it was pretty intense, um, and it's eight hours, right? So. Uh, we talked a little bit after our business networking event on Wednesday. You're not gonna get credit for it. It's gonna look different, but is there like a light version of that? But maybe we could partner with. The hospital's mental health team to offer. Um, certainly they recommend the full training. It's just hard to get your frontline supervisors to eight hours of paid training. So. Um, we're kind of looking through what that might. Take you to form. The other thing we considered is just like a small series. If we would do our business networking. We don't necessarily open it up to frontline supervisors, but what if we created like a side education program? So. We're working on what that looks like. It's extremely important topic. Um, there's just so much. So either you put it into eight hours and get it all at once or something.
Thanks.
Alright, well, it looks like we're done for the day. They're not calling back.
Nope, it does look like it.
And so do we have to table that or just?
Well, yeah, let's good table to, and you know, now we're gonna probably have to play crop damage. This field's gonna get planted. I'm gonna have to tear it up the field.
They meet on Tuesdays then?
Yeah.
So then they'll be calling us, wanting us to meet with them tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna tell them to.
Getting tired of us. So.
Webster at the suit is like, come on, why do we always have to be the ones coming in?
What would be the total of cost of having that done? And then we could go back and claim. Their half?
We can't do it legally.
You can't do it legally.
Until we have this meeting, that's the problem.
Okay.
Cause it's, cause it's a joint, it's a joint, both, both districts have to agree.
Does it need to be a complete quorum?
Yes.
Okay. It's gotta be all five of you.
No.
No, it has to be three of us and three of them. They have to, they have to have a quorum. We have to quorum and they. Vote wise, it's, it's based on percentage of the district. But they still have to have a quorum.
If they wanna do it tomorrow, I am available tomorrow morning.
Well, besides the fact, we wanna set up the MOU with them anyway.
Yeah, I mean, we got a lot of stuff to discuss.
Yeah, that's true. Cause we have them, yeah, so it needs to be both of us.
Anyway.
Alright.
So you wanna just table that until we'll.
No, we have to.
Set up, make a motion to table the joint meeting with Kusuth. Till we hear from them.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Okay. Well, we're motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.